Welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, May 28th. I apologize for the delay in start, but we are starting the meeting at 6:11 PM. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Garcia. Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Mr. Romero.
Recording stopped.
Hold on.
Recording in progress.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera-Cologne.
Present.
Dr. Caraballo. Caballero. Uh, Mr. Wellerhand.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. I just got to go over a few basic House rules. Um, on March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The Act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31st, 2023 to March 31, 2025. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. So, moving on to Agenda Item 2, which is Student Showcase. This evening, we do not have one. So, we're going to move to Agenda Item 3, which is Public Comment. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on, um, an item of the agenda? Or has anyone sent or submitted public comment?
No one has submitted.
Okay. Moving along, we'll move to Communications and Reports. And I do see that we have our Dean, um, Dean Representative, Mr. Kennedy present. So, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to share your report?
Yes. First things first, the National Technical Honor Society induction ceremony will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, May 29th, from 2:30 to 4:00. This will consist of our next generation of scholars getting inducted, as well as a candle lighting ceremony and some tasty food at the end. Next, the thing that's been on my script for months now. Dean Tech graduation is on Thursday, May 30th. This ceremony will begin at 5:30 PM in our gym. We look forward to seeing you all there. Uh, for those of you who raised concerns about the, uh, past heat wave in our gym, we are attempting to make efforts to battle that. Um, unfortunately, it is quite challenging, but we are attempting to take steps for that. Um, next, on May 18th, our car show was yet again a success. We had over 115 cars on display with the grand finale of Miss Crochlow driving the Dean Tech race car under the limbo bar. Uh, we raised 12, uh, we raised, yep, $1,200. Each graduating class will be getting about $300 each. And on May 25th, the Class of 25 held their, uh, held a car show with their advisor, Mr. Cream. They raised, uh, $475. To, next. Dean Tech held their class day at which the entire class, uh, sorry, entire school, as well as family of the seniors, students were in attendance to see the graduating class get their awards. With that, our valedictorian for the year is Isaac Rosado Cruz from Carpentry, and our salutatorian is DeShaleys Torres from Health Assistant. Moving on, uh, well, not moving on, congratulations to them, that's a big deal. Uh, student government elections will begin next week for the school year of 2024 through 2025. The official election day, voting day, will be June 12th, I believe. To, next. Dean Tech's After Dark program begins this evening, coordinated by our Career and Technical Education Director, Joel McAuliffe, uh, which is just upstairs in the gym, uh, not the gym, sorry, the cafeteria at the moment. Our Health Assistant Program and our Advanced Manufacturing Programs are going to be featured in this pilot program. Um, I actually forgot to do this at the beginning, but this is the graduating class's yearbook. Um, Ms. Wilson, if you could pass this down, you can take a peek at it. Um, and Mr. Uh, sorry, Superintendent Soto, I will collect it from you at the end of the meeting. You can take a look if you'd like, and if you have any questions, I can answer them.
There's a link on the back with the video, right?
Yes.
Oh, that's cool. What do you do, scan it like a?
Yeah, it's a QR code.
Yeah, it's a QR code.
And it has the senior video.
Excellent. Uh, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
So, Mr. Kennedy, it's all set, and I can purchase three?
Yes, the way that you're, um, the way to purchase your book is you're going to have to come into the main office and pay with a cash or check, um, with our, uh, office manager, Luna.
Any other questions for Mr. Kennedy? Nope. Um, I do not see a student rep for the North Campus, so we're going to go ahead and move on to our superintendent receiver reports, and that is fiscal year 25 proposed budget.
Thank you. Um, and give me a second so that I could put this, uh, presentation up. I'm going to share my screen here. And this guy. Share. Great, so I, I do want to acknowledge that I have my entire leadership team here. Um, we're, we're very excited to present our budget. Um, you know, I have, uh, folks that are in person, and I also have folks that are online. Um, anyone online, uh, if you're not going to be speaking, just, just keep your camera off so that, um, and then when, you know, if, if there are questions that, that come up, uh, during your sections, you, uh, you can come off, off camera and, and come off mute to, to address that, and I would appreciate it. But, um, I wanted to get started with, you know, just lifting one of the messages that I sent, uh, in your packet, which, uh, is, is really one of our core beliefs in Holyoke Public Schools, uh, is that students are at the center of everything that we do. And this, this budget places students first and is designed to achieve our mission to ensure that all students develop the skills and access the opportunities to graduate high school ready for life, career, and college. Um, I really, everything that we do is, is centered around our strategic plan. We just had a conversation about the amount of input that went into that strategic plan. And as a part of that process, um, you know, which involved over 1,200 stakeholders, over 60 meetings, and, and different, uh, whether they were in person or, or, um, virtual, uh, and different focus groups, uh, we, we were able to establish, you know, the different components that make up our strategic plan, which is our core beliefs, our vision, our mission, our equity commitments, and of course, our priorities. Um, this is a, a slide that should be familiar to all of you. Our vision here at Holyoke Public Schools is that HPS is a high-performing school system where students reach their full potential. Educators inspire, families, our partners, and the community thrives. Um, and our mission here is that through inequitable, inequitable, high-quality education and trusting relationships, all Holyoke students develop the skills and access the opportunities to graduate high school ready for life, career, and college. Not going to go through all of our core beliefs, but I think the one most relevant to today is that the students are, are at the center of everything that we do. Um, you know, that, that, one of the things that we can do, uh, i- is during our, our, our budget process, uh, make sure that we're leading with, with that in mind. Leading with, you know, if, if we're going to make this investment, you know, is it good for our students? Um, sometimes, and I've said this, I've said this many times throughout my career here in Holyoke Public Schools, oftentimes what's good for kids might not necessarily, uh, align to, you know, um, how adults feel about that. So, uh, whenever, whenever we're faced with that decision, we're always going to make sure that, 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 uh, students are at the forefront of, of those decisions. Um, our equity commitments here, I'm not going to name them all, uh, but I think the one that I do want to lift today is that we ensure that students, families, and staff get the support that they need to be successful. Talking about resource allocation here, and, um, again, we want to make sure in our budget development that, that that's what we're doing. We're making sure that our students and staff and our families are getting whatever they need to be successful. Here's our, uh, our priorities that were laid out. Uh, we have one on early literacy, one on learning experiences, inclusion, whole child, and educator development. Think we've spent a lot of, you know, we spent the last few years really, really heavily focused on early literacy and learning experiences. And this year, you know, we had a pretty solid plan to, to really shift our focus, or not shift our focus, but really lean into inclusion and creating those opportunities for kids. Unfortunately, um, the plan that we had developed relied on additional staffing, and we, you know, we just weren't able to, to hire the amount of special education and ELL teachers that we'd like to have. You know, uh, our leading, our, our leading theory was that if we had a, a, a special ed teacher on every grade level team, that they could be a part of the planning, they could be a, a part of the grade level team, and that they would just be able to better support students and co-teach in, in many of the classrooms. And that was difficult to do. Um, you guys have seen that 70 vacancies all year, uh, teacher vacancies that we haven't been able to fill. So, part of, uh, balancing the budget this year is just rethinking that staffing model. That, that's, that would be nice, but we, in, in today's, uh, staffing market, it's just not realistic. So, uh, part of, uh, our balancing of the budget was eliminating, you know, some vacant positions that were very hard to fill and that we just couldn't fill. Um, moving forward, I think that admittedly, uh, there has been, you know, because we were focused on those two things at the top, kind of, I, I don't want to say we've, we've ignored, uh, these other two priorities, but, um, our, 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 our focus was really narrow on those two. And, and really what we're, what we're seeing is that we think we have really good curriculum in place. Uh, we have really good instructional practices in place. Uh, our leaders are, are well-trained to really focus on instruction and what's going on in the classroom and help develop teachers with the instructional practices that they've been learning over the course of the last few years. But admittedly, we, we need to do more to support, you know, school culture and, um, and mental health. And you all know with, uh, with our teacher retention work group that a lot of, a lot of the, the recommendations that came out were really focusing on in the upcoming year. We've recently just announced a, a change in schedule that hopefully gets at, uh, our teacher retention, where our leadership team right now is heavily focused on trying to prioritize what our professional development is going to look like and to differentiate it by years of experience, which is, uh, some feedback that we had gotten along the way is that we need to, you know, we, we don't want a teacher that has been here for 20 years to be attending the same trainings that our first-year teachers are, are going if they've already done it. Um, sometimes that's necessary, right? Sometimes that, that's really helpful when a teacher does need that support, but we got to be more mindful about what we're providing, uh, about providing those differentiated supports to, uh, to our staff. Um, I kind of alluded to this, uh, you know, uh, my leaders, our leadership team at HPS has really been, you know, one of the things that we've gotten feedback is that we're trying to do too much, right? Like, there's so much, and we really need to narrow our focus areas. And, uh, one of the things that we are doing for next year is, is naming what our three focus areas are going to be. And the first one is to deliver high-quality lessons to, uh, ensure that all students develop grade-level skills and are supported to reach grade-level expectations. Um, you know, essentially, like, if we feel if teachers are prepared, well-prepared, going into a class with a, a strong lesson, um, it's going to lead to a much better experience for our students and our staff. Um, our second focus area for next year is going to be to use instructional feedback and student data to identify what students know, what they need, and adjust accordingly. You know, uh, essentially, we could summarize that by saying we need to look at student data and, and make sure that we're making, uh, data-informed decisions. Um, and then the third one, which really gets at those, that, that bottom whole child is to execute, uh, execute, uh, school-wide systems and classroom strategies to promote student connection and positive learning behaviors. So, those are, you know, we've tried to really narrow in our, what are the three priorities we're going to focus on next year that are going to be the highest leverage in terms of getting the outcomes we want for kids, getting the experiences we want for kids, and, and being able to provide, uh, uh, teachers with the supports that they need. Um, I want to name, you know, I, 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 I'm sure all of you have, uh, heard in the news, you know, a lot of the, the budget challenges that people are facing um, in surrounding communities, and we're, we're, we're actually seeing that as well. Um, we're, we're in a unique position in that we're really strategic in how we used our ESER funding, and we're, we, we happen to be a community that is benefiting greatly by the Student Opportunity Act. So, the Student, Student Opportunity Act is, uh, essentially our general fund. And, uh, three years ago, they said, you know what? Districts like Holyoke are not getting enough to meet the needs of their community, so they're going to be getting more. Essentially, the biggest change in the Student Opportunity Act is that, uh, districts are getting more money for economically disadvantaged, uh, student, uh, bodies. That is the majority of the Student Opportunity Act. So, but what's, what, what, the challenge is, is that it's being phased in over a six-year period. So, they didn't, they, they say, hey, this is a target, like, you should be getting $27 million more every year, but we can't afford $27 million, so we're going to chip away at it over the next six years. So, we've been slowly getting a, a little more general fund revenue every year. And, um, our plan was, let's use this ESER money to be able to, uh, to, and then in three or four years, we can hopefully sustain a lot of the investments that we're making on the, on this federal, on these federal dollars. So, we have two more years left of, of, uh, after next year, we have two more years left of Student Opportunity Act increases, and then it'll taper off. It'll start to be more, more based on inflation than it is, uh, implementation of a new funding model. But I am very happy with, you know, some of the, some of the investments that, that we have been making. Um, you know, we've, we've recently settled contracts for paraprofessionals, for clerical staff, for our APs and deans, for our therapists, our custodians, and our craftspeople. All, all of those, uh, collective bargaining groups, we've, we've reached agreements with and, and have ratified their contracts. So, you know, part of our salary increases for next year is, is those increases. Um, and, uh, what, how, what I mentioned before about things that were funded on ESER, you are going to see some funky changes in some of our department budgets, and that's because, you know, during the pandemic, when we had these federal dollars, we started investing in things like new curriculum or, uh, just generally investing in things and using ESER to do that. And little by little, we, we're putting some of that stuff onto the general fund budget. So, the change from one year to the next, uh, eventually will stabilize. Um, we did a lot of that for our elementary and middle schools last, in last year's budget. We tried to take all the academic intervention teachers, all the counselors that were on ESER and move them. Um, one thing we weren't able to do last year was the high schools. So, a lot of the funding in, in this year's school budget for the high schools was still on ESER. So, um, you'll see a significant increase in the high school budgets because the stuff that we invested ESER on to, to balance the high school budgets now is coming to the general fund. Um, things that we funded on ESER that we're going to continue is, is, uh, increase, uh, counseling staff. So, we want to make sure that every school has an adjustment counselor. Um, we invested in academic intervention teachers. So, every school has at least one ELA and one math academic intervention teacher. Um, and then, uh, our expert teachers as well. These are teachers that their main focus is, is coaching other teachers and helping develop some of the, uh, professional development and essentially just serving as mentors and coaching other teachers in the schools. Every school has one, um, ELA and, and one math. Um, there is probably one school that is sharing, um, sharing one of those positions, depending on how many teachers there are in that building. So, if there's not a lot of teachers in that building, they could be sharing. But, um, essentially, this budget funds one of, of each content, ELA and, and math. Um, our Deans of Management and Ops, I know that, uh, uh, previous discussions that we've had at the beginning of the budget development process was that those were positions that we weren't going to, um, I don't know what I just did here, so. Yeah, that we weren't going to allocate, uh, but we were able to meet with all of our principals. And principals have discretionary money, so a lot of our principals decided to keep their Deans of Management and Operations. And the, the primary reason for that is because the reason we hired these Deans of Management and Operations was that, so our principals can be instructional leaders. You know, so they're not, they're not, you know, focused on lunch duty and, and, uh, arrival and dismissal and every little, uh, every discipline issue that comes up in the school and scheduling and, you know, assigning substitute teachers. Like, all of that takes up a lot of time, and when principals are spending their time doing that, they're not spending their time focusing on instruction, on instruction and helping, helping, uh, um, make sure what's happening in the classroom is, is what they'd like to see. So, you know, after having them for two or three years, the principals really wanted to make sure that they, they continued them, and they prioritized them in their spending plan. Um, we've, we, this was another thing that was, you know, we've funded a lot of this on ESER, and we've had to absorb it into the, um, general fund, and that's the Enhanced Translation and Interpretation Services. You know, we're, we're probably spending close to a million dollars on that now just to make sure that families that need their IEP translated have them. Make sure that when we have community meetings, you know, even now, this, this school committee meeting is, is right now being interpreted live by our, our interpretation team. So, those investments, we, you know, we couldn't afford them before ESER and SOA. We funded them on ESER, and they're moving to the general fund now while ESER, uh, is going away. Um, those are just some of the investments that, that, that we wanted to name. Around, uh, teacher retention, development, and mentoring program for first-year teachers, uh, that is something that's new for this upcoming year. So, included in the budget is, uh, stipends for mentors. So, first-year teachers, our goal is that every single first-year teacher in Holyoke Public Schools is going to have a mentor, which is going to be, uh, another fellow teacher that has experience. There's going to be an application process, but there's also going to be compensation tied to that. Um, that's something that we have heard loud and clear for the last, you know, at least five years. Uh, we used to have mentors, what, what's going on with that? So, this upcoming school year, we are making that, um, we are making that investment into, into mentors for our first-year teachers. And, uh, you all know the announcement we made, uh, a, a couple of weeks ago about the change in the schedule, which also came, uh, with, uh, additional compensation for our high school teachers. Um, around technology, uh, we have servers that are seven years, seven year, years old, and, um, luckily, we've been able to, uh, uh, over the summer, we're going to be replacing those, so they're really at their capacity. And, you know, one of the things that we, that, that we saw on, on our Panorama survey was, you know, uh, around infrastructure. So, next year, all of our teachers are going to be getting brand-new devices, and our internet is going to be much more stable because of the investments that we're making, um, in these, these, uh, servers and switches. So, the servers, uh, the switches actually plug into the servers, and that's kind of what you see right up here. Um, we're also making a huge investment in student devices. So, um, you know, our, our plan right now, I believe, is that in, uh, grades K to 5, we're going to be replacing all the, getting brand-new devices for those, and then starting a regular cycle of, of making sure that, uh, our devices are replenished every, uh, when they reach the end of their useful life. Um, uh, new curriculum that we're, we're, um, that's specifically designed to support early literacy and students with disabilities and English learners, those are investments that, that we've made and are making in the upcoming budget. Uh, we had our, our early literacy team and, and Rebecca Thompson and Caitlin come present at the last school committee meeting, and as part of that, you got to see what the, uh, K to 2, uh, curriculum adoption was going to look like for next year.
We do have a question. Um, Ms. Wilson?
Um, with the, uh, student and staff device replacement, what's being done with the old devices?
Yeah, so the, right now, the plan is for the old devices to be used in, in, so like, some of them are two years old, three, they're good.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm wondering.
They're going to be used, they're going to be used still by kids, students in grades 6 to 12. And then, and then the following year will be, whenever those reach the end of their useful life, we'll be investing in, in devices for grades 6 to 12.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Mrs. Soto, uh, the money that's going to go to the general fund from ESER, is that extra, uh, money or?
No, ESER is going away. So, the problem, uh, Ms. Tensley-Williams, is that we have things that were funded on ESER, and ESER is gone. Like, it is no longer going to be able to support our operating budget after September 30th. So, um, what we're doing is taking things that we invested using that federal money, and we're, we're making conscious decisions that, like, we want to move that into our operating budget. And where we're able to do that is because, um, Student Opportunity Act has given us a little bit more money every year on the general fund. We, you know, we technically hit a funding cliff this year, but we've been preparing for it.
Yep.
So, you'll see in, later in the presentation that, you know, part of our strategy to balance the budget is to use some one-time funding sources, like our School Choice Fund and, um, like, uh, general fund carryover, to be able to, like, get us to a better place after next school year to where we don't have to use as much of those funding sources because we'll get more Student Opportunity Act.
Thank you.
Um, another thing that we, you know, we, we've, uh, invested in and are going to continue to invest in is, uh, a new implement, uh, an implementation of, of MTSS. So, our, we have a team right now that is, uh, trying to develop a plan for Holyoke Public Schools MTSS. It's comprised of two teams, one that's focused, uh, three teams. One that's focused on SEL, one that's focused on academics, and another one that is focused on behavior. And all those teams are, are working together collectively under, uh, Dr. Mahoney's leadership to, uh, to develop a plan for next year that we plan on, um, rolling out to principals at the end of June and, uh, to, to hopefully make sure that, that students are getting the supports that they need around SEL, around academics, and around behavior. Um, in terms of facilities improvements, you know, we, we, everyone knows that we're in the process of, of constructing a new middle school, so that work continues. One thing we have slated for this upcoming ser, uh, summer is that we're going to be replacing all the windows and the doors at Lawrence, Dunnehue, and, and McMahon. Um, for those of, those of you that have driven by McMahon or Lawrence, you can see the, the windows are like foggy, you can't even see the, the natural light in the classrooms, uh, is not ideal. And, and when you do make improvements like that, it, it really does feel like a new school. Like, it, it, it really just brightens up the classroom, and, and, um, those are some really good investments that we're making, thanks to the MSBA and the, uh, the city council's support for their portion of it. Um, our plan is to also, uh, upgrade, uh, HVAC and boiler at Dean, McMahon, Sullivan, Ian White, Morgan, and Dunnehue. Uh, currently, we're, we're shopping that around or, or bidding that out. Uh currently, we're we're shopping that around or or bidding that out. I I'm not confident that we're gonna be able to do all of those things. Because depending on how expensive the bids are when they come back, it might mean we have to take one school off or two schools off. If they come in higher than what we were initially anticipating. And um a playground replacement at Lawrence is is also in the works.
I have a question, Mr. Collmar.
Do we have a contingency plan in case something drastic happens in our school system? And and you you mentioned boilers, but it could be anything, roofs, it could be. The playground collapsing or some, some ordinary thing now shouldn't happen. But we, we should have a contingency plan in works so that we can go and get it. We don't have to go to the city council every time we're looking for something.
We, so we have a reserve for contingency, it's about less than half a percent of the total budget. So it's in the range of about four hundred and fifty thousand. So we do have a contingency, but I can't say, like, we still have to follow procurement law and net school spending law. If a boiler breaks, we can't use that to replace the boiler. We have to go to the city and ask them to to replace it. Um because that's greater, you know, any inv- any facility upgrade that's greater than uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can't use the school department budget for and count it towards the net school spending that you have to go to the city and and ask. Cause what happens is if we use that, all it does is it is it increases what our net school spending is for next year. So it's like, we gotta ask the city council at some point for that money anyway, you know? So to, I I think the the best way to answer your question is that our contingency right now is about four hundred and fifty thousand. Which is less than half a percent of the entire budget, um but it can't cover every possible scenario.
I I understand that, but at least we have something.
We have something.
Have something in the pot in an emergency to go right away and get it done.
You'll see, uh in terms of revenue, our our general fund went up by five point six million or five percent. And that's, that's really uh one year of the 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 Student Opportunity Act. As you know, as we talked extensively about um charter school tuition reimbursement. So this um has gone, has gone up about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. So that's money that we get for reimbursement of new charter school students. Our school choice funding, we're actually using about a million dollars worth of school choice uh funding. We haven't really used our school choice funding over the last couple of years because we knew this funding cliff was coming. So we we wanted to actually continue to to grow that fund so that we didn't have to make a ton of cuts this year. We'll we'll have another year of Student Opportunity Act money in the upcoming school year. Um and then uh something that's not part of net school spending is the transp- transportation funding. That went up a million and a half. And I I will say that my, I, we're meeting with the city council tomorrow. Uh I anticipate that, you know, the majority of the questions and the majority of the uh. The dialogue with the city council is gonna be uh around this this transportation funding. You know, we we are doing everything that we can, you know, we we have strategies that we did to try to minimize those costs. But the reality is is that, you know, the the cost of each bus has gone up. But also, you know, a significant portion of that cost is out of district, uh special education students. And we have more of those students, um which which leads to uh a an increased cost. And I wanna name right now too, that the the figure that we have in our budget is not even enough to operate the way we're operating. So like, we're gonna have to do a lot of work to get to that number. So I know, you know, at the beginning of the school year, there was a lot of conversation about changing the mileage threshold. And and increasing buses to different neighborhoods, like this is part of the reason why we can't do that. Um most departments in the city of Holyoke were asked to go o- only increase two percent, right? Um and this is something that's completely out of our control. Um but we, what we need to do is make sure that we're doing everything in our control. To make sure we're being as efficient and and fiscally responsible as possible. And then this last one is really important to note, you know, yeah, I I, we just talked about other communities cutting their budgets. And other communities don't have the Student Opportunity Act money that they have. So they've made investments using Esser um and are now in a position where they have to lay off people. And make se- severe cuts in programming and things like that. We're not doing that, um but part of how we are balancing the budget is we're using about four million in transition funding to get us there. So um because we've had so many vacancies, we're we're able, we were able to uh carry forward about three million dollars to help us balance next year's budget. Um the state has graciously, uh we haven't asked, we haven't had turnaround money for the last couple of years. And um, you know, I had this conversation with Russell, you know, the three years ago, they're they were like, what do you need for? Uh for for state funding? And I said, we don't need anything, we got this Esser money, but I promise you, we're gonna need some money in three years. Um and he held, he held true to his promise, um and they're giving us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this upcoming year through their state turnaround grant. Which is available to 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 districts that are in receivership. Um and then there's, there's one time Esser money that, Esser doesn't expire till uh September thirtieth. So we're using some, some of that to help balance our budget for next year. Um this, this just depicts like what our chapter seventy, what our general fund looked like for many, many years. I think that, you know, my first year in 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 uh school finance was probably two thousand ten? Yeah, two thousand ten. Um it looked a lot like what you see in thirteen to nineteen, very, very flat revenue. Meanwhile, health insurance is going up, salaries was going up, electricity was going up, everything was going up. But the revenue was staying flat. And then came the Student Opportunity Act, and that's where, that's where you start, you're starting to see these increases in funding. Um we're gonna see this for two uh up until two thousand and twenty-seven, where then it kinda tapers off. You can see that it's going up, 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 and then in twenty-eight, it kinda stabilizes. That's what it's gonna look like. Um and we just need to be smart with with our resources, right? And make sure that we're evaluating investments like, like Yadi said, uh Dr. Yadi Let Rivera Cologne said earlier in our. Subcommittee meeting is like, when, when do you say what's working and what's not working? We do that every year through the budget development process. Um if we're in a position where we need to cut or invest, like we have those hard conversations, uh it's a very inclusive process. Um but we do have those conversations every year.
We have another question, Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, this is just probably a good time just to mention that. We now have like a five-year budget plan in effect to kinda, you know, look at our revenues today. And just um make sure that the revenues will be there in five years, um you know. Because the funding sources might be leveling out. So I just wanna uh acknowledge that, you know, your team has been uh uh upfront.
Yeah.
With that and just um, you know, we're not in uh the same uh. They get a picture as some of the surrounding towns where they're, they're using the Esser money to plug their gaps. You know, so, so um, I just want the public to know that we have a a um long-term plan, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on the expense side, what we're, what we see is uh salaries going up two and a half million or four percent. Um it it maintains staffing that we had, that we have had this year. Um and it also includes the the new collective bargaining agreements that that I named at the beginning of this presentation. Um and, you know, this number, like I said, would be higher. Uh but, you know, we're funding about a million dollars on salaries um on our school choice fund, which we haven't really had to tap into. Um for for the last few years. Um in terms of supplies and services, that's going up about a million and a half or sixteen percent. And health insurance uh and other benefits is going up about ten percent. And we work with the city, um the city just moved to a self-insurance uh policy. And as part of that, you know, the school department's portion did go up to about uh ten, ten percent. Whereas last year, we didn't see any increase in health insurance for um active employees. And then uh non-retirement, which is another major cost driver in our budget, went up about eight and a half percent. Um out of district tuition, I wanted to name that, like, although it looks like it went down, I do have a slide in here that shows that it's going up drastically. But what we've done is moved a lot of those expenses off of the general fund. Um and and onto that, that the carryover fund that that we talked about earlier. Um so that, so that uh we can, you know, wait for another year of Student Opportunity Act funding. Uh we are in the process right now of working with a consultant that's helping us um take a look at special education. And make sure uh that we're making the adjustments that we need, um not just around cost, but about around better support for for our diverse learners. And then our charter and school choice, just like the Holyoke Public Schools is getting an increase in their general fund money. Um the charter schools, the way that funding works is we get all the money and then we pass it through to the charter schools. So they're getting a little bit more, even though their enrollment hasn't increased, um they're getting more money through the Student Opportunity Act. This uh this slide really is to to ag- again, address the transportation. I did, I do anticipate a lot of conversations with the school committee about this. Um it does include charter school transportation. Um the the rates themselves have gone up by five percent. But what has increased even more so is the amount of routes that we have for uh special education out of district routes. Doesn't necessarily mean that the number of students has gone up at the rate that the costs are going up. Um but definitely the amount of vans and routes that we have um has increased. And and you know, that is one of the things that we are looking into. You know, we, there's, there's two schools in particular that have a lot of vans going there. So one of the, one of the strategies that we have to try to work through to get us to the number that's in the budget is. You know, instead of using eleven vans, can we, can we use three minibuses? You know, um you can fit more students on minibuses and it makes more financial sense. So we're exploring things like that.
Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you, um um, can you kinda bring us up to speed on the current busing contract? I kinda lost track of where that was. I know we had a bid and they came back, I think we were thinking about maybe having a a rebid, so.
Yeah, so last year, we bid it out and it was awarded to Durham and Vanpool. And essentially, it resulted in, I believe, a thirteen percent increase um last year. But um a five percent increase every year after that for five years. So we'll see the rates going up by five percent every year for the next four years. This is year one of a new contract.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um I'm sorry, but I believe I, I remember the conversation about the busing. And when you were going over, I think there were like, what, six different uh scheduling things? This was the, this was the cheapest for the district, correct? Am I correct in saying that or am I completely just making stuff up?
Yeah, this was actually, so we, we did a public bid. Um and when you do a public bid, Evan, um Mr. Kennedy, uh you have to go with the lowest rate. So the companies that we went with by far had the lowest rates. The the next company, uh the next closest company that uh other than Durham, I I don't remember what the name was. But they were like two and a half million more expensive than than what Durham is. Um but we do, you know, we got a lot of work to do internally, admittedly, like, you know, long, it's gonna have a long-term impact. But not so much an immediate impact. In in the immediate, I know that we need to look at those routes, those schools that have a lot of vans going to them. And seeing if there's an opportunity there to to do something different. And then in the long term, we, we really gotta evaluate or or review how our IEP meetings are going. Who's making the decisions on when transportation is is like, putting some structure into that process. Is going to, I think significantly impact the funding that that goes towards transportation. I'm not trying to take anything away, I just wanna make sure that we're doing what's right. Uh but, I mean, we have, I've heard of and have witnessed, you know, when I was overseeing transportation. Um there were, there were buses going like across the street, you know, uh picking up a kid and literally not even driving a block. And bringing them to school because it's in their IEP, like, that doesn't make sense, you know? Um and I, in in some scenarios, it 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 does, but I know that it doesn't make sense in all scenarios, right? So we really gotta think about like how those decisions are made, who's making them and put some structure in place. So that we're just being fiscally responsible. The city can't, our transportation budget right now is more than the entire fire department's budget.
Yeah, yeah, I know, um my point, no, my point was like, I know it's rare of me not to uh criticize the decisions made by district administration. But I wanted to like, point out that that was like the best financial decision for the district. Uh because even though, yes, it doesn't look great, that is what, you know, that is the best decision that could have been made at the time.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
So I believe in um IEP meetings, the um special ed team leaders, the settles are the decision makers for that. Um in the meetings. And so, you know, I'm just gonna reference back to before our current director of special education. Um the previous individual uh provided no training for a vast number of new special ed team leaders. Um and I think um that led us down the path to where we are now. Um so I just need to comment that I'm sure the, you know, the current director, as well as the special ed team leaders. Are are going to be getting good advice as to how to make those proper decisions. Um and it's not, you know, using the word not benefit, but require. That students require this and it's not just benefiting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wilson. And you know, uh we had sped strategies come in and and do a review of of our special education department. And one of the recommendations that they had was, was really like, really elevating the role of the the ETL. And providing them with the right support so that they're, so that they are, they do feel empowered to make decisions at the building level. Um yeah, so there's gonna be some changes in that, in that area. Um it's not gonna be a full, quick implementation, but we're, we, you know, we definitely know that there's opportunity there. To to provide better support and training. Um you know, this is uh to Mr. Kennedy's point, I I think one of the, one of the things that I wanna name for the city council. Is some of the decisions that we made to to minimize the increase in transportation. Uh which is, was rebidding the the contract. Um even when we've got that initial be- bid, like, like you said, Mr. Wellahan, we rebid it and changed some of the specs in there. Which which uh ended up saving us like seven hundred thousand dollars with the second bid. Uh we've adjusted school start times to make sure that we're max, every single bus that we have now is tiered. We used to have a lot of buses that were on single tiers when we're paying for two tiers. They were on single tiers, so we took a look at all of our school start and end times. And we, we uh made sure that we're maximizing each uh bus that we were paying for. Um and those are, those were things that we, we did. And and thanks to the city council too, um I went to them at the start of FY twenty-two. Um to ask them, you know, because a three-year contract had been up. And I had asked them like, look, if we go out to bid right now, we're gonna see a twenty-five percent increase. So uh let me negotiate a new contract with these for the, for the next two years. And we were able to negotiate a three percent increase for those two years. Um but now the, that five-year contract was up and we had to. But now that, that five-year contract was up and we had to rebid and this is where we're at today. Um, this just summarizes everything. So our total budget all in with the, uh, just on the general fund is about a hundred and twenty-eight million. Um, and that's about a six million, six point six million dollar increase from, uh, last year to this year. But, but that, that also includes the increase of one point two million in transportation. And you could see here, our normal process is we look at, uh, it, it, towards the end of December, we just try to project based on what our enrollment is. Um, and we were initially projecting, uh, six million dollar deficit. And, um, that was assuming that we were gonna keep everything that we had on ESER, that we were just gonna keep all the vacancies that we had open. And, uh, then the governor's budget came out. Um, and we met with department heads, we met with principals and looked, evaluated the budget requests and got that deficit down to about seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then, um, finally balanced the budget using some of the strategies that, that we talked about earlier in, in the presentation. This slide here is, is, uh, basically shows you how we come up with our operating budget. This is, uh, it starts at net school spending. Um, the city takes some of that money for admin costs, like the Treasury Department, the Procurement Office, things like that. And then, uh, we add, uh, charter reimbursement to get to our adjusted net school spending number. And then these, this, this second set of numbers is not included in our net school spending. It's transportation, uh, crossing guards, Medicare, Medicaid processing and leases that are greater than three years old. So these are all things that are above the net school spending requirement that the city, uh, kicks in. And then they take back some money for, uh, insurance and other benefits and retirement. So the city withholds about eleven point four million dollars of the school department's money for, for the benefits, for insurance, um, and, and retirement benefits. Um, and we work with the city on those numbers to come up with our net school, uh, budget appropriation. I think the point I wanna enforce here is that we're funded at the very minimum net school spending number. Thankfully, we have the Student Opportunity Act and that number has gone up. But we're not, you know, we're not asking the, the city to provide us with funding above the net school spending requirement.
Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you. Yeah, just to kind of, um, emphasize, you know, um, is it fair to say that the city pays really the taxpayers pay around twelve percent of the city budget? The rest is funded to the-
A little less than twelve percent.
A little less than twelve, okay, okay. So that percentage has stayed, uh, true.
Yeah, I have a slide that shows that in the upcoming. Um, this is what the city looks, this is what the city budget looks like in their budget book. So when we go to city council tomorrow, it's just these two lines and then the, the state assessments. And that ties to the previous slide on how we got to the net school spending number. Some assumptions that were built into our budget is we're using the houseways and means budget. So, um, at the end of the fiscal year, when the, when the governor adopts the budget, we'll, we'll reevaluate if there was any impact. We're also assuming that the city's gonna meet their, the net school spending requirement. We're assuming that, you know, circuit breaker's not gonna get cut. We're assuming that Title I will not be cut significantly. Um, that all our E-rate applications are gonna be approved and that enrollment is gonna be fairly consistent with what we, with what we initially did in our school staffing allocations. Generally speaking, that, that usually is the case. The place where it, it could get a little tricky is pre-K and kindergarten. Because we got a lot of late registrations and, um, right now, we're assuming that the, we have the same amount of kindergarteners that we had this year. But who know, you, you know, until they register, we won't know exactly how many kindergarteners we, we will have. Our, our, another major assumption is that we'll have, uh, lost time and attrition of about one point two million. That's a reduction from the, what was in the current year budget. Um, and, and, and then that our, our general fund carry, carry forward is gonna equal about three million, which we're gonna use to help balance the budget. And that the state is going to follow through on their, their, uh, commitment to giving us, uh, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in turnaround money. And I, they did mention to me, uh, not in writing yet, but that they're gonna increase it to add the, um, the review of the policies. So they're gonna give us a little bit more money to cover that cost. Um, now we're gonna get into, uh, the, I think we can, uh, move to the department budgets in, in a minute. But, uh, this is some, again, some higher level, uh, facts about, about the budget. So about eighty-eight and a half percent, to your point. Uh, Mr. Wellahan comes from Chapter Seventy State Aid and then eleven and a half percent comes from, uh, local taxes. That does not include transportation though. And then, you know, according to the latest data that was published on Desi's website, we're one in sixteen communities in the entire state that's, uh, funded at or below minimum net school spending requirement. So when you look at how other communities fund their schools, um, on average, they fund them about twenty-five percent above the net school spending requirement. If we were to be funded twenty-five percent above the net school spending requirement, that would mean we would have twenty-eight million dollars more than what we have. And I'm not sa, like, the reality is, is that the, this community can't afford that, right? The communities that are doing that, you know, can't afford it, like Cambridge and like Long Meadow and all these other communities that they have the tax base to do it. So I'm not saying this to, uh, talk negatively about our community or anything. It's just an interesting fact that, um, other communities that have the ability to do, to, to fund above net school spending, do and on average in the state of Massachusetts, that's about, uh, about twenty-five percent, so. Here's a quick picture of what, how much of our funds come from state and how much come from local. Again, uh, eighty-eight and a half and eleven and a half percent. This just shows the two, uh, the three districts that, uh, that locally contribute the least. Um, are Lawrence, Springfield and Holyoke. So where, we actually go back and forth with Springfield every year. Um, but right now, uh, in, in this year's budget, Springfield actually, uh, is only contributing about nine percent. Whereas Holyoke's about eleven and a half percent.
Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you for, um, the stats. Yeah, I mean, this is where the student opportunity money comes into play because, you know, the city of Holyoke doesn't have the funding to, to really, um, fund their schools, um, above net school spending. Again, we're not in the same situation as Newton, Cambridge and Brookline, okay? I won't go on after that. You know, this chart that you're showing here is, you know, some of the poorer, um,
poorest communities in the Commonwealth.
Cities in the state and we're, we're just one of them. I mean, that's, that's just the facts, the statistics will show that, you know, it's not an opinion, it's just a fact. Now, so this is where the money that we're getting from the, uh, the, um, uh, the student, uh, the Student Opportunity, um, Act really comes into play. Thank you.
Are correct, Mr. Wellahan. This, that's why the Student Opportunity Act is so important in a community like Holyoke. Um, this is how we organize our budget. So, um, you know, when we talked about, you know, part of the conversation with the local control committee was deciding what cost centers we wanna review. Like my recommendation, or not my recommendation, but this is, these are the cost centers that, that we've organized the budget. So it allows us the flexibility that if we wanna move money from one school to another, we don't have to go back and, you know, schools don't, if they wanna move money within their budget, they can do that because it's all within that yellow slice. So I do wanna name that, you know, pupil services, for example, is eleven percent. But I would say that the, you know, ten percent of what, you know, maybe I'm not, I, I don't wanna throw out statistics, but the majority of the pupil services budget and the majority of the, you know, academics budget and, um, you know, so, so strategy and transportation, like, those are all like direct services to our students. And, um, especially in, in pupil services, like we, that's where we house all of our one-to-one paraprofessionals, where we house our related service providers. So like this, this pie, when, you know, if, if you include all those school-based costs that are managed by, in, in a separate cost center, um, you know, the majority of the money is actually in schools and not, not these departments, it's just where it's managed. You can see here, uh, I mentioned like there's gonna be some changes that are a little bit out of whack and I actually have, uh, explanations for all of these. Um, but you can see, you know, academics and school leadership going up. A lot of their expenses were funded on ESER last year and we, you know, we've moved some of those investments into the academics general fund budget. Um, we, we saw a decrease in finance. The strategy and transportation is really, one point two million of that is the transportation budget. Um, human resources, uh, that's where we had, uh, some increases. And we're gonna go through, the reason why I asked our, our team to be here is that if you have any questions in, you know, academics, for example, uh, I have Rebecca here. If you have any, uh, detailed questions that you wanted to ask. Um, Sean's available online, Sean's online and we have other, other cabinet members that are online that are, um, ready to answer any questions that you will, will have. Uh, academics and school leadership increased, like I said, because, uh, a lot of the stuff was funded on ESER. And we were, we've moved it to the, to the general fund, one of them being, um, curriculum and assessment contracts, um, some literacy tutors that we had that was funded on ESER. We had a manager of, uh, culturally responsive education that helps, um, support our ethnic studies program. That was funded on ESER and we've moved it to the general fund in this cost center. And the mentor stipends that we talked about. So, uh, we wanna make sure that every new teacher has a mentor. Those stipends are now included in the academics budget, which is, um, which is why that, that cost center has gone up. So in academics, um, we've organized, uh, the academics budget into these categories. So dual language, early education, ELA and humanities, ethnic studies, extended learning, math, science, social studies, DEI, office of school leadership and academics, and then arts, music, physical education and health. You know, um, I wanna make sure that, that you're all aware that this doesn't include like our art teachers and our music teachers. These are just the expenses that, um, that are district, that are housed at the district level and spent at the district level. But for sure, schools are, uh, you know, art teachers and music teachers and phys ed teachers, they show up in that big yellow pie, part of the pie where, where it says schools. Um, and there, you know, art supplies and music supplies and phys ed supplies, that's all in the school's budget already. It's not, it's not separate here. We do have some, like a small amount of money that the department heads for those, for those, uh, content areas, uh, um, support the, the teachers, but every teacher in this upcoming budget year is get, uh, has three hundred dollars for supplies separate from, you know, the, the normal supply budget that, that principals had.
Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you again. Yeah, just not a long discussion, just some comments. I know, um, we're talking about getting, uh, more, uh, more of the student population, um, involved in the arts, the arts and, and the music. So hopefully, you know, next, next couple of years, we can have that, that number increase, maybe, maybe ten percent. You know, as a former history major in college, you know, the social studies, one percent, you know, that's the lowest one. You know, so I'd like to see that, you know, increase too, just, uh, you know, the, um, have our student body just be, um, aware of, you know, history. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. I, I do wanna reinforce though that, um, our art, music, PE and health budget is a lot bigger than that seven percent because a lot of the, a lot of the cost is really teachers and the supplies that schools purchase. So they just don't show up in these cost centers. But your, your point is taken. And I also wanted to name that we do have music and art in every single school. Allocated teachers, right? Uh, some schools have had a very difficult time trying to find, um, art and music teachers and in turn have, have had to make decisions around what electives students are getting because, for example, they can't find a music teacher. So they had to be creative and do, and, and, and create a different elective where they had a staff member that could do it, um, and encourage them to apply.
Mr. Kennedy?
Just to kinda clarify something that Mr. Wellahan said. Super junior Soto, it's, it's, uh, I'm correct in saying that social studies, the ethnic studies and humanities are all essentially like, not, not even close to the same curriculum, has the same goal, right? In like what it's teaching, it's teaching, you know, like the, the history of everything. So I mean, it's not just that one percent, it's just that specific curriculum that's at one percent. Am I correct? Do you know what I'm saying?
It's whatever supplies are in this budget for that department head. So we have a director of science, um, and we don't have a director of social studies at the moment, but we do have a department head, I believe, that, that makes up, you know, a portion of the social studies budget. Or we might have some curriculum in there that we've purchased to allocate to schools. But this doesn't include every social studies teacher in the, in the district. Like, it's just not in this budget, it's in the school's budget. So we, we have way more, we have a lot of social studies teachers, we have a lot of ethnic studies teachers. They just don't show up in this budget. In this section of the budget. Yeah. Any questions for either me or Rebecca? Or, uh, Mr. Mogell? All right. Um, included in your packet, I kind of wrote explanations to all the changes. So I'm gonna move on to the next department if, if no one has questions. Great. Uh, the next section here, the next, uh, department or cost center is around transportation and strategy. And really, um, our chief of, of strategy and turnaround, Erin Linville. She oversees, uh, our communications department, our enrollment center and homelessness, uh, support, um, department and our transportation department. Uh, the majority of the cost is, is one point two mil, the one point two million dollar increase for transportation. So, um, you could see that transportation is going from about ten point two million to eleven point seven million in next year, fifteen percent. We, we see a small decrease in, in communications, uh, because we moved one of our, uh, language access, um, interpreters from the communications department to actually be on the translation interpretation team. So they'll show up in the special education section of this budget. But this, this budget's pretty self-explanatory here. We have a, a enrollment center, um, where families come, uh, staff support them. Families are able to get support with enrolling their kid, uh, if they're making changes or anything like that, that, that's the, uh, that is the place that they go. It's on the first floor, right-hand side of fifty-seven Suffolk Street. Any questions? Human resources, we saw a one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar increase, no increase in FTEs. Um, and the majority of that increase, uh, is due to- Shifting budgets from, we had a teacher diversification grant and, um. And Esser money, uh, where we were funding all of our pipelines, um, you know, we had a. Paraprofessional pathways program that was funded on, on the, on Esser. Or that teacher diversification grant, so what we did was we tried to keep as much on this teacher diversification grant. Um, as we could, but the, the remainder of it, you know, we are committed. To, uh, uh, making sure that we're developing our staff, developing our paras and maintaining these pipelines that we have. Um, and, and so we've shifted those costs, it wasn't an increase in like the scope of work that the HR department. Is doing, it was simply a matter of taking something that we, we've been doing for the last three years and moving it from Esser to, um. Uh, to the general fund, any questions on human resources?
So with the path, sorry, so with the pathways, um, for the paraprofessionals or paraeducators, I'm not sure what their preference is in our city. Um. So, you know, are, are we helping fund their, uh, development to become educators through this?
Um, I have, I have Beth online and, and if the committee would allow her to speak, I.
So, um, if, so if there's a motion to suspend the rules, but can we just do it for every. Department just in case, I mean, I think it's more prudent to do it that way, so if there's.
Motion to suspend the rules for any potential department head during this presentation.
Sir, second, so, um. You know what, I just had a brain fart right now, um, if there's no one opposing, um, go right ahead.
Alright, Beth, thank you for joining.
Yeah, thank you for having me, um, for the, the pipelines and pathways, we always welcome. Um, the paraprofessionals to participate in things like the urban teacher pathway and things of that nature. We are in the process of building out other, other pathways for the paraprofessionals to become teachers as well. Um, for example, this past year, we, we developed a partnership with UMass for early childhood. That focused more on paraprofessionals who do not already have a bachelor's degree, so, um, a lot of. A's, what you see here on the teacher diversification grant and the Esser. Um, funds shifting, it, it's those pipelines and pathways that we were building out. Um, that are shifting onto general fund now, um, because we wanna sustain that and we do offer financial support for paraprofessionals. Um.
That's for tuition assistance, Beth, is that, does that cover tuition assistance as well?
It, that, that is part of it, uh, for some of them, the structure is different depending on the pipeline. The pathway that they choose and the program that they're participating in.
So I have a follow-up to that, uh, my question is, is there any, um, commitment to staying in the district? After receiving support from our district to, to get this next level of, uh, education?
Yes, so right now we're asking for a three-year commitment. Um, on average, I would, I will say like it depends on the amount that we're providing the individual, what sort of commitment we are asking for. Um, but generally speaking, we're asking for a three-year commitment after the completion of the program.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, thank you so much, Beth. Any other questions for Beth? Uh, the next, uh, budget is our operations and technology budget, you can see. Um, in that, that cost center, um, the majority of it is operations, so this is where. Our custodians are, this is where our utilities are for electricity and, and heat. Um, this is where our craftsmen are, like when, to your point Mister Collamore, when, when something, you know, when something's wrong with the heat. Uh, we do have like Cody, for example, as one of our partners that, that, you know, they're a phone call away and, and we have an existing. Uh, contract and partnership with them to support stuff like that, so that's where, um. That's where this budget is, and really, we, we've just really tightened down, so we've, we, we saw. A small, uh, decrease in the, um, operations and technology budget. Uh, there were some things in our technology budget that we had during the pandemic, so we. We just rethought about, um, some of, you know, some of the subscriptions that we were holding, that we no longer needed. Um, we, maybe we, you know, Zoom is, Zoom is an example, right, we had enterprise licenses for everybody in the district, for example, but. Not everybody needs it, right, like, cause, uh, that was when all of our teachers were doing remote, uh, learning and had to have. Uh, uh, an enterprise account that allowed them to, to be on Zoom for more than forty-five minutes. Um, so, just things like that, we're, we're just being a little bit more, um, smart about and, um. So, uh, we also saw some savings in our utilities budget. Um, obviously with the removal of PEC, one of the things that PEC was, was, uh, uh, it was definitely a drain in energy. Um, and not having that school online, uh, we were able to save some money on, on utilities. Any questions, operations or technology? Moving on, pupil services, um, and Mary Ann is not here today, she actually had, uh, some, something with her son. Um, who is receiving an award today, so, uh, we're, we're sorry she's not here today, but, uh, we'll do the best that, that we can, Sean. Sean's online as well, so our, our special education budget. Is organized into these cost centers here, so we have our special ed, summer school. Special education services, our ETLs, our related service providers, so OT, PT, speech. Um, our psychologists, and then, uh, the biggest part of it is our out-of-district tuition costs, which is. Which represents the majority, you know, le, a little less than half of the, the special education budget.
Miss Wilson. Um, we've spoken several times about the out-of-district tuition, I'm, I'm wondering if you can give, um, school committee members a breakdown. Of, um, more in-depth as to like per student, what the cost is, just so we can have a, a better understanding. Of the out-of-district tuition.
Absolutely.
That would be great, I think.
Yeah, uh, if, uh, Ellie, if you can provide me with like the level of detail you want, like, if you're looking for like the amount by school. Or how many students we have enrolled in each school, we'd be happy to provide that.
I can definitely do that for you, thank you.
Okay.
I think what would be good in there is not only the, the different out-of-district, uh, placements that we are using. It's kind of also, what was the previous that we were paying before, what it is the, the new year, or what it's forecast gonna be for. For the following, the other thing based on that is also, are you taking into account? In, um, in the budget, when we're looking at services. Is, again, we talked about a lot of positions that. You know, we've had great difficulty, especially when we're looking at specialized services such as speech therapy. Um. Are you? Taking into account the cost that it, that it's giving, are you still, when you're creating this budget, looking at it as if we still don't have those positions and we're using. These outside sources that are costing us more than had they have been an employee.
Yeah, that's a great question, and, um, Sean has worked with Mary Ann to try to figure out, like. What the right amount of professional services and what the right amount of positions is. And we think that we're gonna be, Sean, I don't know if you wanna chime in here, cause I know you were working closely with Mary Ann.
Yeah, we know, we reviewed that very closely this year as part of, um, developing this budget, um. For the most part, we did stick with positions and what happens if we can't fill the position, then we shifted over, um, to contracted services. Uh, but I know, for example, we've seen a little bit better luck this year, um, I know we've had a, um, some psychologist applicants, for example. Where we haven't had many in prior years, um, so at this point, it's still a lot of it's budgeted in the position side, um, but we are. Constantly monitoring that to see if we have to, um, i- if it's unrealistic that we're gonna fill a position. Do we just start budgeting it on the contracted services side, but unfortunately, as you noted, like it's a lot more expensive, sometimes double the price, so. Um, we wanna continue to actively try to find people whenever possible.
Yeah, and I, and I agree that absolutely we should be trying our hardest, um, but at the same time, I kinda look at it this way, I guess. Tell me the worst end right now, and then if, if it turns out that we're on the better end, I'm happier then. Um, versus then finding out, well, you know, now, we kind of needed to use more. Because, and I know for a fact that we had a lot of difficulty in, in filling those positions, so we were looking for outside. Um, vendors to provide those services to our students, and we still owed back. But, um, I was, I was just thinking, you know, being more prudent towards it and just, you know. I don't know, cause I don't think we filled every position for speech therapy, or did we?
Not with, not with, not with, uh, employee candidates, we, we definitely had to get some outside providers to help support.
So it's just building that budget as if we're gonna still continue using outside services. Even if we do end up hiring people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So again, out-of-district tuition, it looks like it's going down, but it's not going down, it's just that we're, we're not funding. A big port, three million dollars of it is not funded on the general operating budget, we're using general fund carryover. Um. We did add, uh, uh, two, uh. Two ETL positions that were funded on Esser, we moved them to the general fund. And the increase in sped services is about a million. One point one million of, of translation costs that we previously were funding on Esser. So that's an area that like, we're gonna continue to, to monitor, um, if we don't need that much money, um. To, uh, translate IEPs, um, you know, this is one of those kinda unfunded mandates, right, where. We're required to do this work, but the chapter seventy formula doesn't really address, uh. Uh, communities that have a higher need of, of, of language access in, in the community. Um, but we're committed, uh, this, this year for sure, and, and in future years. To, uh, find the right balance between how many translators, interpreters we have on, uh, internally on our team. And how much we ha, we have to get, uh, you know, language, uh, other, other companies to help us. With, uh, interpretation and, and, uh, translation.
And I know I'm just kinda gonna go off topic here, but it's based on what you were, how you were saying, you know, the translation, it's, it's. It's a mandated, but it's not funded, right? But, it's just like, he should signing a, a document to go under the knife. Right, but not really understanding, cause I'm telling it to you in English and you only speak Spanish. But let's go even further, right? What about families, individuals that even they're reading and understanding of literature, whatever it is that they're reading. That it might be at a third grade level, even those IEPs, they're not even understanding and they're signing, um. So it's how do we even br- break it down even further so that when people are signing. These IEPs, at the end of the day, it's about the support for, for that child to succeed, and if. They're really not understanding what they're signing, it's really also not, not providing the student with the resources that they need, Miss Wilson.
So the state is put, um, we are having a new IEP form, and I think, um. You know, the push is to move away from the educator lingo and move into a student. And parent guardian friendly language, um, so that things are more understandable for all. Um, you know, I can tell there's, you know, significant training as far as that goes, um. With this new IEP format.
No worries, thank you. Um. So this, this next slide is, really shows what's going on in, in, um, our out-of-district. So you can see, we have about a hundred and fourteen students that are currently in out-of-district placements. And, uh, next year, we're budgeting about thirteen point four million dollars, so. Um, you can see the big jump from twenty-three to twenty-four was. Primarily due to the OSD increasing the rates by fourteen percent, so with a lot of these schools, the OSD just sets the rate. And last year, they, they increased the rates by fourteen percent, uh, which meant, you know, even for each student, we had to pay. Uh, more money, and I think this, you know, that, that jump from twenty-three to twenty-five really speaks to that. More so than the, you know, the increase in thirteen students.
Mister Wellhand.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers haven't really got up that much and, you know, it's just, you know, the rates, you know, I mean, come on, six million dollars to thirteen, so it's doubled.
Yep.
You know, the amount of students hasn't doubled.
Yeah, I mean, they've provided us with some temporary relief, right, like they have a circuit breaker relief fund this year that allowed us to. Uh, you know, to soften this a little bit, but long-term, I, you know, I think they're financially in a position to do that, but. Long-term, that fourteen percent is not gonna go back, like, that's gonna, you know, that, that's the new rate moving forward, you know? Right. I have to let Sean back in here, so. Alright, um, and then there's the budget for, uh, our budget, basically the superintendent and, and school committee budget. I think the ma, the majority of that budget is. Legal expenses and reserve for payout, so we did, did, uh, cut that out of the budget and we're using our. Our, um, our reserve for contingency budget, budget to, i- in case if something comes up. That normally would've came out of that, you know, ninety thousand dollar line item, we'll use our reserve for contingency budget. I do wanna point out and add here that we did add, uh, into our budget, the zero point five. Um, FTE for, uh, admin assistant, that, that position is currently posted. We, we had one applicant, um, the posting had closed, I just reopened it again earlier this week. I'm hoping to get more candidates interested and then I'm gonna be working with Miss LaFave to, uh, to interview. Any candidates and, and hopefully get somebody here that could help support, um, you know, with, with, with everything that, that. This, the school committee needs. Any questions? Schools, uh, we organized it, uh, middle, high school, elementary, the transitions, our athletics budget, our nursing budget. Um, and then the charter and choice, that's what shows up in the, the schools line item. Um, again, the charter and choice, we can't really like, there's nothing we can do to control those numbers. I do have enrollment numbers, it shows that, you know, charter school enrollment actually has gone down a little bit. Um, but because they're getting more money for Student Opportunity Act, the, the cost there is, is pretty significant. And you could see here, um, a lot of why it looks like middle and elementary schools is going down is because we're using. That million dollars in the, the school choice fund, and last year, I mentioned it at the beginning of my presentation. We took a lot of expenses off of Esser and moved it to the general fund. But we did that for elementary and middle schools, we didn't do that for high schools, so. The high school's budget last year was balanced using about one point five million dollars or one point two million dollars. In Esser money, and this year, since that's going away, we had to put, we had to put that into their budget on the general fund, so that's why it looks. A little bit, um, a, a little funky there, but moving forward, as we continue. To, uh, implement the Student Op- Opportunity Act, you'll see. These, these large changes will start to stabilize because everything will be baked into the general fund and we won't have these like one-time. And we won't have these like one-time funding sources. Um, you can see, uh, on the next slide, I actually kinda went into explaining. You know, at the middle school, for example, like, a lot of, I, I, I opened with, um, this inclusion model that we had, that there was a grade level, uh, special education teacher at every level. We had, you know, seventy-one teacher vacancies, really tightened up what, what our staffing model should be. Uh, based on what, what the market is, and that's part of the reason why you, you see a, a decrease there. Any questions?
Mister Collmore?
Can you tell me where the five percent reduction?
Yeah, um, Sean, are you on?
Yes, but I didn't hear the question clearly.
The question is, why did athletics go down by, uh, one percent, by five thousand dollars? We can, we can certainly.
Let me take a, let me take a quick look, but, um, essentially the way we build that budget is we sit with the athletic director. And go through each line item, um, each year and, and essentially level service, uh, fund it. So, um, this is a level services budget, but I can get you the, the specific why it looked down five thousand.
We can get that to you, so it could mean there was very low participation, um, in, in a particular. I'm not saying we eliminated a sport, but maybe we'd, you know, I'm giving you an example of what that could be. We sit down with Mel Martin and we go through like, what do you need for coaches? What do you need for equipment? And this is the budget that she provided. We didn't, we didn't cut the athletics budget. Um, this is what she needed to continue to, to, to fund the athletic program as is. And we've made, we've also made some pretty significant investments outside of this operating budget. Um, to get, to get Mel and, and the athletics what they need.
Get to Mel and say, how, how can we increase the enrollment of our programs? So that we have different sports. And, uh, and I cannot really say this. Our athletic clothing is the best. I'm so proud of that, when we go traveling all over the state to perform for the city of Holyoke. That our equipment and our jerseys are really, really nice. And I don't want that to go away because it's not just representing Holyoke High School. It's representing the, the city of Holyoke, all these students going different places and looking, looking sharp.
Yeah.
But I'd like to increase, see if we can increase. If students aren't playing one sport, can you encourage them to try to play another sport?
We would like to increase that too, Mister Collmore. I think what's happening now is students in, like, students' interest in certain sports, right? Like, we can't, for example, we, we don't have a hockey team, right? We don't have enough kids that wanna play hockey. So that's, that's why we don't have a hockey team. If we had enough kids that were interested in hockey and we could field a team, we would definitely have a hockey team. Uh, over time, what has happened is that we just haven't had that level of interest at, in, in Holyoke in that particular sport, for example. So we have to partner with other, you know, with, with another school district to make sure that if we do have one or two kids that wants to play hockey. That they have the opportunity to do that. But I can certainly talk to Mel and ask her if she has any strategies or, or, or recommendations on how we could boost participation in sports. I'm sure she'll have a lot to say and I'll make sure I share that with you.
Yeah, I, and I agree, you know, we, there might be some sports that we never even thought about, that.
Pickleball.
That maybe we can form a team. But of course, the problem is, the other schools don't, aren't providing that kind of a sport. So I understand what Mel has to go through to get different teams playing. So we'll just have to encourage Mel to go out and look for other sports for kids to play.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this, uh, this slide, th- these next few slides are just about cost drivers. So on average, uh, you could see what our average health costs, health plan costs are. Um, one of the slides showed how much money we're, we're, we're allocating to the city for our share of the cost. But you can see healthcare cost continues to rise and our average teacher salary has also, um, risen as well. For, uh, every, every year since, you know, since about twenty twenty. And, uh, we're actua- you know, next year is when we're, we're actually entering into negotiations with, with the teachers. We've, you know, that's just when the, the three-year contract is up and we'll begin those negotiations next year for the following year. This is a list of our charter school expenses. You can see just like our general fund, it's gone up since twenty-one because of the implementation of the, um, of the Student Opportunity Act. And the re- the reimbursement has, has remained pretty steady around two million dollars. Um, here is a trend of, of enrollment. You can see that our highest point of enrollment was about eight hundred and forty-five students that were choosing to go to charter schools. And we're about, we're down to about six hundred and sixty-six. Um, I think, uh, uh, you know, a good portion of that could be that Paulo Ferreira closed. Um, which, which I know we received a lot, uh, about seventy of those students came back to Holyoke. Um, to finish out their, their high school career. Um, but, you know, it's the, this, you know, I, I just, the, the point I wanted to make here is that charter school. Assessments aren't going up because enrollment is going up, it's, it's just a function of the Student Opportunity Act. And, um, here's, uh, choice enrollments. I know that, you know, a, a narrative that I heard a lot in, in many years is that. Choice enrollment continues to go up, it's been relatively flat for the last, since, you know, two thousand and nineteen. When, um, you know, when, uh, right after the pandemic, you know, I think a lot of families ended up, um. You know, the, I know private school enrollment has definitely gone up. You know, when we were forced to be remote and, and there was no options for in-person learning, uh, charter schools, I mean. Parochial schools did, weren't under the same strict guidance and they were able to accept applications. And some families chose to go there and, and stayed there. Um, you can see on some, a, a, a group of, you could see a decent amount of students also choosing to come to Holyoke Public Schools. That live in other communities, either Springfield or Chicopee. We have about eight hundred and thirty-four of them, um, which that has grown as well since two thousand and fifteen. When we only had about fifty, fifty of them. And lastly, I'll close out with, with just saying that, um, we, you know, we have a new, we, we've rethought our staffing model. Um, and, uh, Sean is in the process right now of, of actually writing a staff allocation manual. That I hope will be completed by the end of the year, the, the fiscal year. So that we can explain kinda how we, you know, how we develop our staffing models at every school. You know, what are the target class sizes, how many, uh, custodians, how many academic intervention teachers? I think it'll be a good resource and tool to use, especially when we're talking about local control. And, uh, budget being a huge part of what the school committee is gonna be responsible for. I think this, this staff allocation model was an attempt to really be equitable and make sure that, that, you know, we're not just favoring one school. Over another, there's a clear, you know, uh, formula or process to determine how many teachers are allocated at what school. And it's equitable, and I can tell you from experience that when I first got here, that was not the case. There were some schools that were getting a lot more than other schools based on different factors. And one of the things that we've tried really hard to do is to come up with an equitable process to distribute resources. And that's what this staff allocation model, uh, seeks to do. Um, and then, uh, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but, um, you can see some of the investments that we've made in each one of our priorities. So, uh, new curriculum for grades K to two, uh, instructional coaching, tutoring for learning experience. We have art and music in every school, dual language programming and out of school time, like after-school programming. Um, and, you know, again, I'm not gonna name all of them, but, um, that, that information is in your packet. And my final thoughts is that, you know, the, the, we're gonna continue to see Student Opportunity Act revenue increase for the next couple of years. Um, thankfully, we're not in a position where other communities were this year, where we, where they had major layoffs or program reductions. Uh, we've been able to maintain this upcoming school year with not increasing our class sizes, not cutting programming. Um, and everything that we did was aligned to our strategic plan, which drove our budget process. And I hope that with, you know, with, um, with the hiring market kinda shifting. And other communities that have chosen to use their Esser money for staffing and are not able to continue those investments. That we're, you know, we're not gonna be in a position where we have a ton of vacancies every year, like, uh, all year, like we have. That is a hope, um, you know, I, we're, we're seeing an increase in applicants. Um, and I hope that that, that, that comes to fruition. Um, some uncertainties really is the rising transportation costs. And, um, what the impact of inflation is gonna be on, on everything that we do here at HPS. And then making sure, you know, continuing to work with our led- local legislators to make sure that the, the state continues to fully fund. The Student Opportunity Act because we are relying on that to, um, to, to continue to invest in the things that we have been.
Any other questions? Mister Wellhand?
Thank you, yeah, no, no real questions, just wanna thank you and your team for the budget and, um, all the hard work that you, you put in place. Um, like I said, a lot of towns are, um, they're having layoffs. Um, they're losing programs, you know, there's some infighting, um, with the budget, um, allocation and the budget development. Uh, so we haven't seen those, those. Issues here, which is good. Um, so, uh, uh, just wanna thank you. I know Mister Collmore and Mrs. Wilson are part of the finance team. And so, um, we've had, um, uh, many, um, finance meetings, talking about the budget. And just the, the budget development and, you know, the, what the trends are, like I said. You know, just to, to, just to follow up on what you said, just with, um, the un- the uncertainties with inflation. You know, the, the vacancies, that's still an issue that, um, hopefully will rebound. And again, just, um, uh, the transportation costs, you know, it's unfortunate that we're putting so much, so much revenue into, you know, a. An item that doesn't really provide, you know, the, you know, doesn't really enrich, enrich, um, student learning. You know, that's, that's really, um, uh, sad, but, um, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mister Kennedy.
Um, overall, I'm actually, um, not displeased with this budget presentation. Um, I will say like for the staffing wise, uh, I like that you have started to put more effort. Into trying to combat, um, the increase in, well, yeah, trying to, you know, help students' mental health. I will say like, my biggest, uh, complaint about this district is how I feel. As though our mental health is often put aside. Um, I even went so far as to, you know, make an entire presentation on that and present it to you. Um, that's a very, that's a, that's a key component of making sure our schools operate. And I will say, Dean, I believe is, I'm not gonna say we're the smallest school, compared to North, we are a pretty small school. And we have two adjustment counselors, we have two other counselors. And I think like an intern person who works with the adjustment counselors. And we have River Valley Counseling, Counseling Center in our building. And even then, sometimes they get incredibly overwhelmed and just there isn't enough resources. Um, so I appreciate that you're trying to put more effort into combating that increase. Uh, had way more, but of course, that's just gonna turn to word vomit. Um, yeah, I can't think of anything else. I, I had more to say, I promise, but I'll tell you later if I. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, another thing about the pan- the panorama survey, part of that was like, the staff didn't feel as though they were listened to. Like, last January, when the survey was, uh, presented, and this appears from the presentation. It appears that, that has, you've been working towards fixing that and, you know, relaying. Adjusting your methods to that, uh, result. Again, I haven't actually spoken to many of the teachers, so I don't know if they feel heard, but it looks like that is what is happening. Um, of course, I will talk to, talk to the people and get the, behind the scenes, but that is what it appears, so.
Yeah, we're actually releasing this Friday, is that right, Dr. Mahoney? Um, this Friday, we're gonna be doing a, a shorter version of the panorama survey to staff. To really see like, hey, how did we close out the year, has things got better? Um, so, um, interested to see those results and share them with the school committee as well. Uh, but that, that email's going out, um, I promised this school committee that we would send a follow-up survey in May, a shorter one. And that's going out this week.
Great, excellent. No further questions, all right. Um, next on the agenda, um, is new business, school committee meetings, uh, school year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. All right, thoughts? Oh, no, we haven't finished yet, Miss Tensley Williams, I know you got a poem for announcements. I know, I know. Um, thoughts on our school committee meetings? Um, continuing twice a month? Or once a month with ensuring that, um, our subcommittees are able to meet. And be able to have fruitful meetings and have their documentation done. So what is everybody's thoughts on that? Do you wanna continue twice a month also, or the, the second meeting can just be focused on? School committee itself, what are your goals, what are? Um, what are some of the school committee goals you wanna do or working on policies, whatever the case is, Miss Tensley Williams?
Um, we need to give the subcommittees time to work on what they need to work on. So maybe have once a month, but if we're getting more done by having two a month, then we have to do that. But we need to give the subcommittees time, you know, because a lot of times we're having them twice a month. That's not giving them too much time to get prepared with what they need to do.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts.
Ms. Wilson, did, did you have your hand raised?
I did have my hand raised. Um, I believe that, um, moving forward, especially to local control. I believe that having the meetings twice a month is the appropriate number of meetings, um, that's my thought.
Mister Wellhand?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah, just, um, um, concur with Mrs., Mrs. Wilson. Um, uh, twice a month is, is, uh, preferable to me. I know one of the problems with having the meetings once a month is if something's, something's tabled. Okay, table an issue and then we bring it back a month later and we sort of forget what we discussed, what would happen. And we kind of talk about it again and it's not on the agenda, we had issues with the agendas, things not going on the agenda correctly. Then it becomes two months, okay, and you, you sort of lose track of the issue. So I think, I think the body, this body owes the public to be here twice a month.
Okay, great, anybody else? Mister Collmore?
I have to agree with what they're both saying. It's a big, uh, try to get every single thing in one meeting. This way, beforehand.
I just keep reading it over and over again.
We need time to review every single subcommittee. And what I'm saying is people have to understand why there's subcommittees. So you go to, it's referred to a subcommittee. Whether you're on the committee or not, you should be, if you're interested in a certain subject that's going to come up at that meeting, you should be there to help them and also to get more knowledge on what's going on, why we're trying to change it. And you just can't do it everything on one agenda and get it done. So I I think we did the right thing. I hope we continue to have two meetings a month.
Mr. Kennedy.
Sorry, I know I don't get a vote, but my thought on the matter is that the meetings twice a month. First of all, we've been having meetings twice a month for a couple of months now, and I think we've gotten out in three hours maybe once. I think that like with everything on our agendas for each meeting, it is still a very long meeting. And after a while, first of all, you just, your brains just don't work from, you know, what a couple of months ago, we were here, well, I wasn't, you were here until like, what, 10 o'clock? A couple of months ago, like adding everything to one agenda is going to be overwhelming. Also, we are officially in the transition process to regain to local control. So we need to be able to stay up to date on everything in our district. We saw just a couple of weeks ago, things can drastically change in three days, right, in our district. So we need to keep up to date and we need to stay, keep the public informed up to date. So I think that two two meetings a month is adequate and what the students and teachers and people in the district deserve.
Okay, so this was just to get a feedback. We're not voting on anything. It was just to kind of get feedback on on people's thoughts. So we're going to go ahead, the mayor and myself to create the the schedule for the the new school year's school committee meetings up through December 31, 2024. The other thing is, is announcements, I know in here we didn't put down like the different subcommittees. And I see one thing that's not on here, and I hope you have it on your calendar, is the Joint School Committee City Council meeting, the regular meeting, not the not the interview one. This is the Joint City Council School Committee. They're going to be meeting on June 13th at 6:30 in City Hall.
6:30 or 6?
6:30 is what I have, and I am going to follow up with that. You have 6:30, right? That's the, that's not the interview for the candidates. This is the regular meeting of the School Committee City Council. Not confusing people because right now we're on something else. So that one is where we were putting in what was referred to the joint committee was the changing of the name, the process. That will be discussed there. So Dr. Rivera Cologne, if you could be there, because that'll be on there. You have that on your schedule, correct? Sure, you did. The what? Oh, oh, the budget thing, our budget meeting? Okay, all right. Now, the other thing is that the mayor wanted me to make sure that I got out to everyone and did the clarification. June 18th at 6:00 P M, the school committee, along with the city council, will meet in city council chambers to interview and then appoint who's going to fill the vacancy into the at large school committee position. Now, here's the the big part. This person that becomes elected or appointed by both committees will serve the remaining of the first two years. Because they will have to up to, up to December 31st, 2025. Because according to our charter, according to our policies, at the next municipal election, there will be a special election specifically to fill in that vacancy for the remaining years. So right now, whoever is going to go through the interview and is appointed will serve in Ms. Brunel's vacant position up until December 31, 2025. So that means if they want to be elected for that seat, they need to pull nomination papers in January or February, whenever it opens in 2025 to then hopefully get elected or voted in by the people in November of 2025. And then they would then continue to serve the last two years. Because then technically, that position would run again in 2027. Right, so? Any questions? I know it's so confusing. Mr. Collmore then Mr. Wellhand.
Is it possible? Is it possible, whoever these candidates are, and send in their resumes, that we get the resumes beforehand rather than the night of that meeting, we're looking through all kinds of resumes? If there's, the city clerk gets them, get get them to us as as quickly as possible, you know, so that we can have a look at the resumes beforehand. And then according to what I'm hearing is someone can walk in that night and put in an application for the position, whether they have a resume or not, their name will still go on for for election.
That kind of sounds like a run from the floor type of thing. But no, so I had asked, right, that's something that they do and all the run from the floor. I had asked that question because so far there have been two people that have submitted. And I asked, are we sending these out as we get them? It was no, it's up until the closing date and then all of them go to you. So then you can review because it was said that it's better for everybody to have the ability to go through these applications slash resumes because it's a letter of intent with their resume, okay? So that all of us each have the chance to really read it, get to kind of know the person by what we're reading. So that when we go to the meeting, we're kind of pretty much informed, right? And so when we're asking questions, maybe you can even personalize it, right? I have to find out when is a specific cutoff date for people.
I have it.
Oh, you have the specific cut. So go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
June 18th is the cutoff date.
Oh, so then I need to contact. I'll contact the chair and find out, you know, how are we going to do this? Because again, you should have the ability to have that ahead of time, even if it's three days in advance. So you can just review the applications and the resumes, Ms. Wilson.
Plus, the posting says that the applicant will, their term will expire in 2027.
Right, so today he just sent the email because they looked over the, so that all has to be updated.
Okay, thank you.
All that has to be updated though. Any other questions? Mr. Wellhand.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just to kind of follow up, I mean, just because someone applies applies to a position, you know, the both bodies have the ability to to
nominate.
choose anybody they want for the position, just because someone doesn't apply for it. You can vote for whoever you want, so that'll be explained that night, too. And another question I have is have we, is there a new chair of the middle school building committee?
Chair, Mayor Garcia appointed Mr. Collmore to be the chair.
The chair. Thank you.
And to be a voting member. No, I'm sorry. No, voting member, Ms. Brunel will continue.
As chair.
And the other thing is, Mr. Collmore will be the chair of the Joint City Council School Committee. Committee. Not the interview committee, not the interview, the Joint City Council School Committee. Mr. Collmore will now be the chair because we have Ms. Tensley Williams and Mr. Wellhand. Mr. Wellhand, you're the chair of the Finance Committee, so I'm now going to keep bombarding you with a lot of work there. Are there any other questions? As everyone sees, we've got the CPAC coming up. That meeting's June 5th, 6:00 P M. I'm assuming that's the end of your celebration. Mr. Kennedy talked about the dean graduation, which is Thursday. So those of you who are going to be attending, 5:30 it starts, I think they want us here by five or something, 5:00 good, 4:45? 5:00 is good. We'll meet in the Fyfield Room? Okay, I got the thumbs up. I'm not asking you. No, it says 5:30. Okay, very good. And then Holyoke High School North graduation, that's on Friday, the 31st at 6:00 P M. Be there around 5:30? Okay, all right. The CPAC meeting, it's typically done on Zoom, but if it's the end of year celebration, I know we've always done it at the merry go round. Hopefully, they put out something on Facebook, on their Facebook page, or if not, it's Courier, definitely provide us with that information. One of the greatest opportunities that I have is attending the Opportunity Academy graduation. And I think it's really important if, you know, we provide support to the students. And that'll be on June 14th from 10:00 to 11:30 in the morning at the War Memorial Building. We have our next meeting, June 10th at 6:00 P M here. That's the budget hearing, right? So it's the public hearing is first?
Yeah, so the the budget hearing, right, was was tonight, so like
No, the public.
Yes, but tonight was the budget hearing. The public hearing is going to be on the 10th, which is, that's when you guys will get your actual full budget books. It'll have all the information that we shared, but there's no real discussion. It's an opportunity for anyone from the public that wants to speak on the budget. That that's their opportunity, but the the heavy lifting in terms of getting the budget presentation done and everything, that was done tonight. So that's not what June 10th is going to look like. If there's, you know, typically there hasn't been any member from the public showing up. So it it in in that scenario, it's a really short meeting.
And then, but before that, huh? So I know that we've typically done it before the school committee meeting. We've done it like, what, 5:30 or 5:45? 5:45 and we've done a 15 minute start the, we never did that, Mr. Collmore?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then it's like a 15 minute meeting, obviously it closes and then we jump into at 6 o'clock into our meeting. But we have the local control subcommittee meeting. So what we could do is that at 6:00 P M, we go into the public hearing and we schedule our regular school committee meeting for let's say 6:15 or 6:10, if if, you know, just in case, just to give something, you know, people time in case somebody does want to present on it or make a public comment on it, okay? So that's how we're going to do that night. Mr. Collmore.
Just to let everyone know that the cooperation between the Parks Department and us has been wonderful. They have agreed not to have any games in softball or baseball because of the amount of people we try to get into graduation. And it's, over the years, it was tough, but they have agreed and worked with us. And there'll be no softball or baseball on the field.
Excellent. And I wanted to make sure that attendance celebration for those that want to want to attend, that's tomorrow at Kelly School, and that's for the district at 5:30. And the STEM Beats concert will be also June 6th at 5:00 P M here at the campus. And the Fun Farm Fair, which I have no idea what that is. That'll also be on the 6th. There's a lot of things happening on the 6th, I'm just saying. Dunnehugh School at 6:00 P M. I think we've covered everything under announcements. There's nothing else. Ms. Tensley Williams, I'm going to let you go ahead with your poem and then so we can move into adjournment.
All right, I've been asked to do this, a few requests. They said, please don't do away with your poems, please do them. So I said, wow, that's great. I didn't want to bore anyone. And I said, no, we love the poems. So because there's so many pretty flowers out, I have roses in my yard, what I'm going to do is my flower poem. I wrote this poem April 26, 2021 at 3:00 P M. It's entitled Flowers. Flowers, 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 flowers everywhere. Although you didn't plant them, sweet smells are in the air. Have you ever wondered where these beautiful plants come from? Some grown in the wild, some grown in your home. When we can see their beauty, some wild, but they are free. And if you can imagine, they are there for you and me. Flowers grow in so many colors, some red, some pink, some blue. There are flowers that are yellow and some are purple, too. There are so many flowers, flowers everywhere. And sometimes when you plant them, they do not need much care. Flowers grow in flower pots and some on window sills. Often people receive them when they are feeling ill. Flowers are so pretty when arranged in a nice bouquet. And if someone is feeling down, flowers can make their day. Flowers grow in the meadows and some grow in the woods, too. They are called wildflowers and they don't need me or you. The next time you go for a walk, if in the woods you roam, stop to smell the flowers and pick some to take home.
That was very nice. Thank you, Ms. Rosalie.
My pleasure.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, hearing no objection. The meeting closes at 8:19 P M. We'll see everyone on June 10th. Thank you, everyone.